Okay, we're back from executive session. No action taken. Two.
Just me.
I see that. Is Rick Duster the interim director? Or is he just...
I think he's just assisting.
Just in CBB. Mm-hmm, okay.
For now.
What time's that juvenile detention?
It's at 10:00.
I have minutes for the 18th. Trista, they were good. And Keith has a couple grammatical errors. And then he wants me to change wording on it. When we were talking about the updated financial policies. Mr. Asher said maybe we could backtrack and ask him if we send out the cost of the audit.
About what?
Uh, this with the operational audit.
You wanted to backtrack first?
I just said, I made the comment that, you know, maybe we can backtrack.
Oh, during the whole entire county? Yeah, you did say that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you did say that.
All right, so I'll add that.
That's it?
Yeah.
I made the motion to go through the minutes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion carries. Um, I can't believe I forgot this. As many people has reached out to me about it. But, um, you know, I know there's some people upset about the tax statements. And the clerk and the treasurer are working to resolve the issue. Um, I know somebody was told that the treasurer wasn't going to send out any, um, uh, things to the mortgage company, but they are. So I don't know who was that talked to, you know, whoever they talked to. But, um, they're working diligently to, um, to address the issue. Uh, I do think we need to send out a, a, a formal, like, press release on it. Um, so I, I think I'll send it another email to the clerk and the treasurer to get that done. Because people are asking a lot of questions.
Well, yeah, I've seen the flurry on Facebook.
Yeah, and I don't know what to tell them. I'm like, I, you know, and, um, and then I, you know, I said to call you guys because I thought you guys are the ones that did the, the statements. But then I was told it was the treasurer's office they needed to call, so.
Yeah, we generate the statements. We balance them and generate the statements up too. And then we create a file that goes to the treasurer's office for her to send them to post-velocity via mail. Um, the thing with the mortgage companies, I don't know, Sherry's talked to CIC two or three times. And of course, we've been dealing with CIC for the last three weeks trying to get our, um, state abstract done. It's been awful. And when we, beforehand, when we were talking about the tax statements, I told Courtney, I said, "I think we need to have onsite support." Because last year was the first year we did the tax statements with CIC.
Mm-hmm.
We had a person here, but every time they go forward one or two times, "Oh, no, that didn't work. I gotta go back and fix this. Oh, I gotta call my, I gotta call CIC. I gotta do this, I gotta do that." So we were lucky to get them out. But she was there the whole time and, you know, whatever. So I said, "We need onsite support." And so we told them, and they sent us this thing that it was gonna cost, I don't know, a few thousand dollars. And I said, "Well, I really don't think that we should have to pay for this because in the original contract, it says that we're supposed to have so many hours of training." So I had Courtney send it to Tammy, since she's our project manager of all this. And Tammy said, "Yeah, it didn't seem expensive, but they were having a Zoom, uh, meeting about tax statements, and she wanted us to watch it first." So Courtney and I watched it. It wasn't worth nothing. It went through the checklist, which we have 115 pages of items for checklist. It went through all those, but it didn't really do a thing. So anyway, we ended up not having onsite support, which was a huge mistake. It just was. Because we don't, we haven't had this enough. Like, with the other one, I could tell if something was missing in it, or I could tell we're balanced, whatever. But this new stuff, we can't tell that. And they're saying, they're telling Sherry that something about the mortgage companies got, uh, deleted back when there was a KAMA upload in June. Well, okay, we do, uh, the abstract in June, you know, for, or July abstract to the state. We have to upload, because Travis certifies to us, and we have to upload data. What does that have to do with mortgage companies? Nothing. You don't do anything with mortgage companies in June or July.
Well, I thought last year they were, during training, we were told to delete the mortgage companies.
And see, excuse me.
Because that's what people are asking. Why don't we have that information?
Yeah, and somebody else had said in last year that they were told. So then when we asked CIC about it, the trainer that supposedly said that, "Oh, I didn't say that. Why would I ever say that?" So I had asked Sherry over the weekend, and I said, "Okay, um, to try to help with this, how about you give us the list of mortgage companies that you have? We'll go in and reprint statements and send them out." She said, "You didn't have a list." And I said, "What?" And she says, "Well, they were all deleted." And I says, "Well, how about one from before?" Well, she was on her phone again this morning and has got a list. It's probably not going to be the latest update, but it's gonna be a lot better what she had. So we're gonna start working from there with them to get this taken care of.
Well, last year, I was one of the ones that got...
Oh, deleted, yeah.
That it was deleted. But my, my mortgage company still had paid the taxes, so...
Sherry has said that while the mortgage companies know who they pay for, they know when the taxes are due, that they'll just do it.
Mm-hmm. But how do they know how much? That's the only thing I was...
And see, that's it. If they don't have a statement, how do they know?
But, you know, I mean, unless I, I'm behind on my taxes and I don't know it.
Well, well, check with that seat.
Are you on a tax sale? No, I, the last time I checked, they had, they were behind, so, so I assumed that they, everything was good, so.
Yeah, well, this has been awful, absolutely awful.
Well, I, I, and, you know, and I don't know if we need to have a special staff meeting or, or what, but, um, I, I think maybe legal needs to get involved in this.
Well, it's, I mean, it just, yeah, and like I said, we still have not been released from the state for our extra because it's going on...
Because no, the, the other counties that have CIC don't have these issues. So I don't, is it maybe a, a network problem with us?
Well, I don't know. When we had talked to somebody from CIC the other day, because we said, "Why is this taking so long? Why'd we wait so long for a phone call?"
Mm-hmm.
"Well, they're busy, and there's other counties that have issues like us." So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. Um, it's, like I said, it's been awful. It's awful for Sherry. I feel really bad for her and her staff because people aren't very nice and, I mean, I can see why.
Well, they're not very, they haven't been very nice. So, you know, that's why I wanted something put out there, you know, that, hey, you know, we need, we're addressing the issue. We're gonna, you know, do what we can to fix it.
Right, I mean, we're, you know, we're gonna work diligently to get something out. And if she has a list, then, you know, we can help her and... Because evidently, they found Friday afternoon, I had left, but Tom and Amy had gotten a call or so, I don't know, somebody came in or whatever. But in the timeframe between sometime in May to maybe the end of June, the deeds that were done, that they'd done, where it changes ownership or whatever, aren't showing up in the system. So we had people calling up and saying, "Well, I bought this, um, blah, blah. How come my name isn't on here? How come I got this? I sold it." Well, then when they went to looking, and I don't know why, because she could have called in, but we haven't heard yet, of course, why, things didn't get changed. Because they looked at the deed, they looked at their paperwork, because they do screen prints, and showed that they did it. But I know, I mean, I, I would like to see that to get involved because I think we should have had training or a trainer this year. And because it's in our contract and not been charged three, four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I agree.
So yes, we're working on it. We're trying to help Sherry as much as we can because, I mean, he's got some calls because I'll walk through there and I'll hear him telling them. But, I mean, she gets the bulk of probably the math. And I, I can't blame them for being there, but it's not like we sat down and said, "Okay, let's see what we can do so we can work twice as hard for the next month before the tax statements go out."
Well, I know it's frustrating.
It really has been. I... And so we asked, uh, we had two of them on the phone from CIC Thursday, I think it was. And so I said, "How come..." I said, "Are you two the only two that does training for, you know, these taxes?" "Well, no." And I says, "Well, that's who we always talk to, though, is you two." And Courtney says, "Well, you know, if there's other counties that are having problems that you're having to deal with, that we have to wait three weeks for a phone call, then do you need more people?" "Oh, well, we have more people. But since there's so many problems, whatever, yeah, we probably do need to hire more staff." And Courtney says, "Okay, well, who can I talk to? Can I talk to the head of your company? Whoever is supposed to be dealing with this."
How you doing?
Early.
No?
No.
And they said...
You're early.
"Well, you can go ahead and write a letter, but, um, we're not really sure who you should send this to." And Courtney said, "Well, I wanna send it to the, you know, whoever is, you guys' boss." And she says, "Well, go ahead and send it to me, and I'll make sure the right person gets it." "All right." Which, I mean, you know, by that time, we weren't gonna argue anymore because it wasn't doing any good.
You refer to public comment? Come on up.
Oh, oh, is it, we're, oh, no.
Do you, you wanna talk? Do you wanna talk?
Yeah.
Okay, well, come on up.
Where are we at with this?
Well, we were just talking about that because, um, we, uh, are checking into...
Do I stand or sit?
Whichever you wanna do. Oh, go ahead and say your name.
Oh, Steve Capizzi.
Okay. And, and you're, you came in about your tax statement.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're, they are still trying to figure out what the issue is and that they will be, um, uh, we're gonna try to resolve this as soon as possible.
So is it a software issue, or was somebody forgot to check a block before hitting submit? And then we just blamed the software, or...
No, that didn't happen.
Okay, so it wasn't software?
It is software, but it's not the case of what you just said, where we didn't hit something.
Well, yeah, I'm not accusing you of not, but I mean, like...
It's, it's something that happened, and this is only the second year we were in tax statements on CIC, which is the name of our software. We go through a checklist. Um, there, she said, "Well, I need to redo the checklist for next year so this doesn't happen." There's something on there about mortgage companies, but we had, the thing that said include mortgage companies. So I don't know. Court, we've talked to them. We haven't really got a straight answer as of yet, but...
Cause have any of the other couple counties that use the same software that haven't had this issue reached out?
I don't know. They told me on the phone the other day that there are other companies that are having issues. I don't know if it's the mortgage companies or not.
So, I mean, I, I mean, I know how this works because, I mean, like, I'm not worried about it. Like, if you guys send me a letter saying I'm late on my taxes, I'm just gonna show you all this and...
Yeah, it, last year, it, it...
Yeah, because it normally says not, this is, this is not a bill, yada.
On one of, of my house, it did have the, the payment coupons, like, like they didn't have my mortgage company and, and my taxes got paid. So your mortgage company knows, I think, to reach out and say, "Hey, we didn't get the bill. Where's, you know, where is it?"
Yeah.
But, you know, you can also, we can also have them resend it.
Yeah, it's more so, it's more so that, I guess, the reply that was given more so like, "Oh, just call the treasurer's office," or, "Hey, call your mortgage." And it's like, "I shouldn't have to do all this. It's already set up." I mean, I know escrow's there. So I mean, like, even if you guys send me a late bill, like, I'm not paying the late fee, but you know my money's there. But it's more so just the answer that it was handled, I guess. Like, it was, kinda came off more as an excuse, more than like, "Hey, we may have messed up." Whether it be the software, I mean, granted, yeah, we turned the computer on, yeah, we load the software, but I mean, there could be a minor glitch in the software.
Sure.
But at the same time, regardless of the mess up with the software, or if it's within the office, it shouldn't be our duty to have to go and correct all this. I mean, there's might be some people that open this, "Oh, it's just my tax bill. All right, cool." And then they get a letter from y'all come, what, April or something? "Hey, you owe us extra money for not paying your taxes." When it, regardless, I mean, I guess the main gist of it is like, you know, the words accountability get brought up, but it seems like when stuff actually happens, it's like nobody's really like, "Hey, we may have messed up," or "Could have been the software, may not have been the software." That's all I'm really saying, you know?
Sure, no, I, and we need to, we need to find out.
It's just the buzzwords get thrown around a lot.
And like I even brought up, you know, it might not be the software, maybe it's something network-wise, because if other companies aren't, or other counties aren't having the issue. But we, but yeah, we do need to figure out, and I, I suggested getting legal involved because we have a contract with them.
Well, yeah, because I mean, in the ultimate end, I mean, yeah, I mean, in the end, it really costs the taxpayers in one shape or form, like, we're, the budget for the software, the budget for this, the budget for that.
Over time to fix all of it.
It comes back to us, I mean, that's all.
Yeah, no, I, I...
I'm not here to cause a ruckus, but I think I might be speaking out for some people that might...
You reached out, there's a bunch of people that have reached out, um, and, uh...
I'm not really worried about it because I know my escrow account has the money in there. I'm the, I even pay extra, so...
Yeah, but what about the people that...
The people that don't know, or the people that just, you know, they've gone through the, the motions each year of like, "Oh, this is normal? Cool, just throw it in the..." Because I did it because I was like, "Oh, taxes, okay, cool."
Yeah.
And then I saw the post, and I'm like, "Interesting."
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to...
Yeah.
The accountability part. I just hate how that word gets thrown around in this town. And when it comes time to actually, I'm not asking for people to get fired or whatever, it's just like, I, I mean, local officials aren't the most liked in some shape or form, but I mean, coming up with some excuses, I mean, to say, "Hey, we may have messed up." I mean, it'd probably give a little bit more respect from the community.
I agree, than they give excuses.
Than you guys catching more heat than what you need to catch. That's just me, though.
No, I agree.
What we've been hearing, they're working hard in this building to, to find profit. Yeah.
And that's why I said earlier about putting something out and answering those questions. And I, I think that's, you know, we need to do that to the public and let them know that...
Yeah, like an announcement or something like, "Hey, this is what..."
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna ask the treasurer.
I mean, just from hear, hearing and listening to other people, I mean, they're...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I got...
Torches and pitchforks ready type stuff.
Yeah, I, seriously, I did, yeah. And Teresa saw it too, you know?
So...
Uh, some of them don't have Facebook, but it was very, uh...
Well, yeah, and that goes back to the people that get these bills that might not have the Facebook, that might not have, like, the older people. They just, they've been here for years, so they're just like, "All right, cool."
Yeah.
Throw it in the folder.
Yeah.
So, that's all I really got.
Well, I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
And we are, we are looking into it to see what happened, and, and we are working...
So like with this, I mean, like, yeah, I mean, I, I could walk over there and give my info, but I shouldn't have to. Now, are the, are us and, or myself and other people about to get a late statement? If these say that, you know, the two systems aren't talking, are we gonna waive those fees? I mean, stuff like that needs to be brought out too, like, like, hey, if you...
Exactly, and honestly, I think if, say, the day comes and they don't have it, um, I think that's something we need, is do the 20th, I think, right?
Yeah, my 12/20 and then 5/10, so it's like after 12/20...
So I, I think that, you know, I, that should be on us to reach out to the mortgage company and say, "Hey, and if we don't know the mortgage company, reach out to you."
Well, and that's another thing, because like, when you ask that question, "Do you guys still have our info?", and it's kinda like, it's, it's all gone. And it's like, what is, what is that? It's all gone, like...
Well...
So is my tax money, I guess, you know, like...
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
Yeah, and, well, yeah, exactly, well, it, it goes both ways, you know, on this side compared to y'all's side.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. We need to, um, we need to, uh, address that. But yeah, that's a good question. But yeah, I, I think if, if things aren't, you know, people haven't, that normally pay, I think they, you know, they'll have that, they'll know that pretty quick. And so I think it should be on us to do that.
That's all I want, that's, I guess I'm here to speak for everyone else or the unspoken voices or whatnot, but...
Well, I appreciate it.
Because I ain't got nothing else to do during the day, so...
Well, I can give you some things to do.
No, I'm good. I got my Christmas ornaments or something right now, so, but that's all I got.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter was so funny on Friday, cause you know, I kept sending the agenda out.
I know, I was like, oh, Peter, I said, you just sent it out again.
He goes, he calls after you'd sent the email, but I hadn't read your email yet, and he goes, Tricia, let me call you and tell you that I.
Yeah, I wanted him to give you the bad news.
Yeah, I made an executive session, he goes, I don't know why she didn't call you, and I said, probably cause she's scared.
I said, I'm not making her mad already, I already made her mad one time, I wasn't doing it again. No, I just said, cause I didn't know what time you had open, I just figured it would be easier, that, but I wanted to send you an email, give you a heads up, but he called right after we got.
I was gonna say, he called, why?
Cause as soon as we got off the phone, I, I said that to you, and I was like, whoa, I'm just giving you a heads up, Peter needs one. Um, but yeah, I will be addressing in the staff meeting, people need to, uh, have stuff to you.
Yeah, and I mean, like I said, they, they usually know that, but it's good to have, if, you know, and then, um, Ben Kitchens was all wound up about the comprehensive thing, and he gets packets, stuff now.
Oh, he does? Okay, but he thought that there was something there.
Yeah.
And he reached out to Tammy, and then I just answered, cause I was on there, and I said, hey, I said, Tammy's not the one that does the packets. And I even, I mean, I even said, like, just a real quick thing about the comprehensive, I didn't have anything to give him.
Well, that's what.
I mean, I can't have her do it and before we agree that we're gonna do it, I mean, that was a waste of time for her to do, but I mean, I'm definitely, as soon as they, she gets something to me, I will, uh, I'll send it to them.
Cause I told him, like, cause I think you sent something, and then I said, Ben, I don't have anything, but if we have something for a packet, then he gets it.
Oh, okay, good.
He requested it.
Okay.
And we are going to, um.
Yeah, cause Tammy said something about it being, that CIC would be able to get it in there, so I was gonna, um.
Cause, um, I think we just need to create a folder on there, and Dana and, well, Amy put it on the website, put the agenda on the website, so I told them to figure out how they're gonna do it as a packet item. So hopefully the next couple weeks we'll get that. Yeah, cause then when I sent the agenda out, and I said, you know, sorry, I had that.
Yeah, I mean, right after he sent that out, that's when he called me, I was like, oh, come on.
And Peter goes, it's my fault.
Oh, yeah, I was blaming him.
Cause next week, I'm gonna do the agenda on, or this week, on Tuesday. Um, well, because of the holiday, and I'm not gonna be here on Wednesday, and I'm gonna go ahead and get it out.
Could you send that to department heads, just in case they have something, so they know, you know? Well, actually put us on there too, in case Alex or Keith has something too.
Yeah.
So, you, what do you got so far?
The only extra thing, well, Corey Trump's here, I don't have any of his packet stuff yet. Um, he always, you know, has a bunch. And the big thing is that the department head meeting is gonna be then, and we're gonna talk about emergency planning workshop, or, and that's what she called it.
Yeah, for the disaster plan.
Is Justin coming in?
Um, not for that one. We're gonna, um, because, uh, we're gonna have, since Tammy registered deeds, and I think Gary are gonna give presentations on what they've already done. And then once we get more people involved, then Justin will get involved to give us any tips on what else we need to, to cover. So instead of wasting his time for that.
It's gonna be similar.
Yeah.
Tricia, you have thirty people at your house for Thanksgiving?
No, thank goodness. It's gonna be small this year.
No.
Maybe fifteen, which is still pretty big, but.
Yeah.
Not the forty, it usually is around forty. But, um, Willie's brother's family in Texas, um, the baby was due this week, but she actually came last week, so they're still not kinda.
Oh, yeah.
Baby, so. It's getting a little early. No, no, he's not, unless they surprise us, which that would be good, but they're still, in fact, they just got their stuff. And so they're still moving, and they painted and everything. But he was all excited, cause he got to see snow for the first time.
Oh, really?
Well, he was a baby one time when he went for Thanksgiving, but this was like, the first time, cause it snowed there, not much, but he was all excited.
Oh.
It's, he's like, it's so cold.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'll be a little quieter than normal, which, I'm in with that. And we even have the girls' Thanksgiving.
Oh, yes.
Are we waiting?
Hello?
Mr. Ramble?
Yeah.
No, always waiting, always waiting.
And he's got four minutes, so.
He's got four minutes, if you're late, he couldn't make it.
Are you feeling better?
Mm-hmm.
Are you sick?
Yeah. Yeah, this is respiratory.
Yeah. Sometime I had a head cold, and I had a cold or allergies this time of year, I don't know.
Well, hi, Peter. There he is.
What are you doing?
See, he's got two minutes to spare.
Woo.
I'm going through that bill that you messed up.
Uh-oh, I messed up.
She says, she, she gets this bright idea to send my bill to PBC. And now that she's got the bill, she says some of it should go back to the county, and so we're trying to get that all straightened out, and that's causing a great deal of consternation to Lisa.
Well, maybe if they would have been on time, we wouldn't have this issue.
No, it isn't yet. The fact is, is that you guys had me doing everything in two thousand twenty-two. It's kinda.
All right, should I have a, here a motion to go into executive session for EMS negotiations, uh, for, you need thirty minutes?
No.
Twenty minutes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
All right.
All right.
So move.
With, um, uh, finance and legal. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Closing, so the motion carries.
I'm, um, thank you.